Alexa, send alarm for 9:40. Welcome, welcome, welcome everybody. We're playing a little bit of Valheim. It was capturing, but now I've hit start game. I think it takes a second to kind of recapture the game. So we'll see. We'll just wait. Says low adding on my side. So there we go. It's kind of a weird game as far as capturing a game window. It changes the name of the window, I think, or the ID of the window. So it kind of comes and goes. So if you start the stream at the wrong time, you don't... Anyway, it's silly. Alright, we have lots of food. We're good. We have lots of stuff in our inventory. I'm playing it in a slightly reduced window on my computer, so I can keep an eye on my clock as well. So we can get on it and have a look around. Let's have a look. So I've added some more things. I've added a kind of a quick exit here to get over the fence. Also added a little bit of a, um, an exit to an archway. It kind of makes it feel more regal coming in. But anyway, what I want to do is, oh, I need to add some more resin to these things. All my torches are going out. Dang it. So much stuff to keep up on in this game. So... Get some resin from those weird critters in the forest, those tree guys. There's a lot of them over this way, actually. So if I start chopping a tree, they get mad and they come looking for you. So let's chop a little tree down. Go for a thin one. It's probably gonna kill me, but... I think I probably should eat too. Behind my head there is my, my food bar. So let's do that. And we'll go eat some more of that. And we'll eat a chicken leg and maybe a mushroom. There we go. That'll fill me up. Oh, more mushrooms too. Look at this. Great job. Where are those things? Come on. I got my axe. I should be able to take them down if they come out. I was coming over here for the dandelion. I still don't know what to use dandelions for, but I will figure it out. Something will come along. It's probably making some kind of drink or maybe some, uh, some kind of salve. Whack! Whack! Happy face. Howdy. How's it going, man? Whack, whack! That, you know what? You are my first DLive alert on the stream. Very first. I'm using, uh, hey! Very first alert. I'm using the little Tiny Labs Alert System for DLive. And you're the very first. So welcome on in. Appreciate you coming by. We're looking for some resin for our torches which are going out. So those guys are so annoying. They come at you all the time. When you want to find them, nowhere to be found. Oh, there's one. Throwing rocks. I thought because they're tree creatures, the axe would be the best weapon against them, but I don't know. I don't know. Holy shit. Run! I did, oh! Shoot! I didn't expect to see him so near the base. Does this mean he's gonna come and attack our base? Ah, damn. Am I, I'm not gonna escape him, am I? He's gonna come out in the open. This is gonna be like a big SmackDown thing going on. I think I need to shoot him with arrows. Yeah, he's throwing fricking trees at me. Run away! Do I have any arrows left? I don't think I do. I'm screwed, aren't I? What should I do, happy face? I've seen you all over the place, happy face. You seem to be all over the internet, but you have no followers on YouTube. Hide behind the tree. Use the tree. I could just do this all day. Missed. One hit from this guy and I'm dead. I got no stamina to draw the bow. So I kind of gotta stay still. Let's see, get some stamina, get some stamina. Come on, come on. I didn't expect to be doing this today. Oh my god! He seems mad. Why is he mad? What did I do to him? What did I do to him? Use the tree as cover. Ahhh, mobby! Is he even hurt a little bit? Yeah, he is. This is gonna take a bloody age though. This, oh shit, he's taking the oak tree down. Oh crap. No! I'm out in the open. I'm defenseless. Ah! You missed. You're out of arrows. Shit! No! Go at him with a little sticky knife. Let's see. Get him to slap me and then I'll hit him. Come on, go for a bang. Go for a bang on the ground. Now I'll get ya. Ahhh! Thought if I stuck him in the belly... I knew one hit would kill me. I gotta make some more arrows. Just hopefully he doesn't wreck my base now, because that could be like, very bad. The wife's gonna be like, "What happened? What'd you do without me?" She's gonna be really upset. I'm hoping I can just sleep and things are good. Let's just sleep and hopefully he'll go away. Mighty bear, sleepy day, winter world, sleep folds and fold flesh fur, no hair, limbs, vast mass... See, you gotta read it really fast. You gotta paraphrase. Is he still running around out there? Shit. Gotta make arrows. Is he like attacking the base? Please don't attack the base. Took me ages to build this damn thing. I think I need flint. Uh, might need resin, might need flint. Oh, flint, not coal. Come on. Uh, none of those. Might need feathers. Feathers? Maybe bone? Where's the feathers? I'm panicking. I can hear him bashing things up out there. He's mad. Where's my feathers? Did I use them all? I have no feathers. He's pissed. I need to take care of it. He's, oh, he's really pissed. Wood arrows. They'll do. Craft. Come on. Shit, what did I do? I angered... Do I have, I don't even have, there's rocks coming through the door now. He's destroying my, my base. No! Items recovered. My bow's damaged too. Shoot. Help, help! I'm being repressed. I heard something about these rock things later in the game. Oh, he's going away. He's leaving. Is he actually leaving? Oh shit, get away from me. You little fuckers. Come on. Get away from me! Don't worry, you're here. Did he leave? Oh shit, he's attacking my base. Come back here, you. He's got all his health back too. Maybe I can lead him away. I'm just gonna lead him down here and hopefully lose him in the forest. Shit, these little things are getting me now. I got no stamina. Oh, he's buggering off again. Come back under pants. He's not coming back. No! And I got no stamina. Oh, maybe he's gonna bugger off. Go back to where you came. Get away from me, you little lizard. She little freak. Go away! Is he leaving? Is he leaving? I think he's leaving. Really? A gek killed me. Dang! Stink butt. I think however, we might be alright. I think he's buggering off. Let's have a look. Think he left, but man, he did some damage. He broke some things. I think all the fence line's intact, but there's wood everywhere. I think he was throwing trees at the, at the, uh, at the building. Oh yeah, he broke the floor. Yeah, there's bits of wood all over the place. There's big log from the fricking oak tree. Oh man, that got, that escalated quickly. Piles of rocks. Get my stuff back. Come on, just pick it up. Why can't I just pick it up? Oh, because I don't have enough slots. Alright. Well, let's eat. What can I get rid of that I don't need to be carrying? Um, I could stack this with that, and I could stack that with that, and then I can take all... I wish it would auto-stack some of this stuff. Oh, it's all too heavy now. Okay. My bow's completely broken. Probably should have set the bloody thing on fire, right? If I set him on fire, he wouldn't be happy. Maybe I'll try that next time. There we go. We're overly encumbered, but that's fine. We'll get back to the base. It's so hard to walk with all this crap. Poor guy. Look at him sweat. It's like me carrying the fricking Costco stuff out. Well, it's nothing like me carrying the Costco stuff, to be honest. I can't even move now. I've got no stamina. And I'm not getting any stamina back. Just, I'm gonna have to drop. Let's drop a big stack of rocks. Oh, hang on, I can stack those and then throw those away. And maybe throw those away for now? That's better. Okay. Alright, at least you can move again. Damn! Let's put some of this stuff away. I'm just gonna do this. Oh damn, I thought it would put it in the chest, but it didn't. Stack whatever we can. Stack, stack, stack. You need an auto-stack. If there is one, I wouldn't mind somebody telling me. Because I can't find it. I need that stuff. I'm gonna take that. Put the feathers away. Gek tails we can cook. Gek trophy. Oh, I've got a cabinet for trophies already. So... Let's put this in here. Seed, I have a seed box, so I'll leave that. These, I'm gonna put this in here. Uh, put these in here, put this in here. That goes in my rock box. Okay, that's my wood box. That's my, uh, food box. Right. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is take half a stack of those. Take half a stack of those. And a half a stack of those. And carry those with me and then I should be good. Do I have space in here? Yeah, I'm gonna, I thought I put the feathers away. Okay. Resin? Stop clicking on the wrong thing. Come on. Weapons. I gotta fix my bow. This little thing fixes all your stuff. There you go. Chest for weapons. I'm good there. I think I can put a torch away. Notice you can't fix a torch. Maybe you can use resin on, on the torch. No. Wonder how you fix a torch. Okay, these things need resin. So let's, um, there, E. Use resin on this one too. I'm missing my pointer because I got my damn thing up. There we go. There it is. Keep the fire going. Oh, I put meat on there. Okay, I gotta wait for the meat to cook now. Happy, how are you, happy face? Seen you all over YouTube, all over Twitter. You, you get around, man. I'm glad you liked the YouTube as well. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Hydrate, you know, it's important. So we are streaming to DLive, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, no, not Twitter, um, Twitch and, um, another Tango? Tangu? I can't remember it, but it's another streaming platform that looks really promising. Um, I just haven't mastered remembering the name of it. Okay, let's see if I can fix this. So we're gonna put hammer in hand. I've gotten rid of everything though, haven't I? So I can't build anything. I can't even repair, I don't think. Repair hammer. Yeah, I'm missing, missing crafting station? Are you freaking kidding me? So he destroyed my, uh, my crafting station. So I need to go grab a whole wacko of that wood. Yeah, okay, we'll grab a stack of that. There was a bunch outside too, wasn't there? I'll go grab that stuff I left outside. Come on, get out the door. Okay, I'm gonna try my quick exit. Oui. Okay, here we go. Why can't I pick these up? You're carrying too much. Shit. Um... There. Alright, I think what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna take down this arch, although it kept him occupied from attacking the main base. So maybe it's, it's kind of a good thing if he ever comes down again. It's just, he's gonna focus his attention on that shit first. So actually might be a good thing just to keep it up and running. Missing a crafting station. Okay, well, let's build one of those, shall we? Um... And... Get off, I need to repair. I don't need you. Um, so I need to go... Having a brain fart. There we go. Do that. He never attacked any of that. Okay. Didn't see that. Alright, so there's a little bit broken there. I'm just gonna leave that, to be honest. Alright, so I think we're kind of back in business. He's buggered off. I'm not going over there anytime soon. Is this the fricking oak tree? It says log. I don't think I could cut it down though with, with my flint axe. Yeah, too hard. So now it's just gonna live there. He had tons of rocks around. So pick up all his rocks. Luckily he buggered off. I'm, I'm glad he went away. The wife's gonna be like, "What the hell happened?" Oh man. I was just looking for one of those little guys, like, to get some resin for my torches and all hell broke loose. He was throwing logs at me. Bloody hell. Get away from me, log. It's log, it's log, it's big, it's heavy as wood. It's log, it's log, it's better than bad, it's good. If you know what show that's from, drop it in chat. We wanna know what, what you know. You know what show it's from. Spumco. Spumco are the creators. I actually met one of the creators at a Comic Con. And he actually sang the log song for me. I felt so cool. He did some of the voices too, which is really cool. I can't remember what now. I feel like a complete Luddite, like I should remember that stuff, but I don't. Why would I wanna fix my wood pile? That button, then that, then that. There we go. Just wanna check my perimeter. Who, uh, misses? Yeah, you got some rock hits on, on some of this stuff. Really? This is just wind damage and weather damage, I think. Okay, we need resin here. Let's, let's get a resin. Okay. So yeah, having stuff around the perimeter, I think really helped. It distracted him from what we, uh, what we were doing. Oh, hello. What do you want? Give me some of your resin. Give me some of your resin. Do, 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 and do, and do. I don't wanna do. Okay. Okay, right-click, we'll go furniture. No, right-click furniture. Come on. And we'll put some torches here again. And I think, I think he got rid of all the torches I had on the perimeter. I had like torches around here, around here. Just makes it easy from a distance to see where your house is. Alright, I'm pretty happy with that. We've got like debris everywhere. I can't put them over here. No, I can't. It won't let me. Alright, well, I haven't got much done that I wanted to get done. So let's see if we can get out of here and go see. We've got... I don't wanna kind of antagonize him again, poke the bear, so to speak. So maybe I'll go south. There's areas south we haven't explored. Let's have a look. Yeah, we can go over here, right? Let's go southeast. There's no compass. I've noticed that, and that's okay. The only real compass you've got is the way you're facing on the map. But there's no little compass indicator, but that makes sense, because you know, why would they have a compass in Viking times? I was saddened you couldn't throw rocks. Like, I thought your first projectile weapon should be the ability to just throw a rock. And it'd be really bad, right? But, but still have something you could throw at a distance. Not a huge distance either. As you, skill for throwing got better, maybe you could throw it a little further, but... Didn't have rock throwing. Alright, so we have, oh, a piggy. Let's sneaky sneak. See if we can get him. Think that tree's giving us some cover. Attacking a tree, not him. Hey, come at you. What's this? A fence? Where are you going? Come back. Gotcha. Give me all your resin, all your hopes and wishes too. Yeah, give me, give me, give me. What is this? Just like a little, what is this? Like a little, a little cabin? Does the door open? Is it anything? It doesn't look like anything. Ting, 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 got you. What's over here that's shining? Is that the resin? Did it roll down the hill? Think it did. Alright, so I haven't been here before, but somebody has. The wife probably did, because she's, she's explored parts of the map I haven't explored. This is a generated map, which is kind of cool too. It's a seed, so you get, you get different maps with different stuff all over. And I love the map generation. It's so good. Like, this map is so dark and dingy and it's probably nighttime and I shouldn't be going this far in a wood like this. in a wood like this. I'm just asking for trouble. Oh, now I'm cold. Let's go attack him. Let's go back to base. Oh, this looks dark and horrible down here. If I go this way and get into the open field, then I can just run up in the open. Think I'm gonna need my torch. Use that as a weapon. The woodland is thinning out a little, I think, I hope. I'm scared. I don't like being out at night. Even IRL, like, certain places at night, ugh, no. Just heebie-jeebies. It's, you know, it's just that usual kinda fight or flight mechanism that human has. You just feel a little unsafe from things in the darkness. Okay, so back into the, oh, there's the house already. See, the torches make all the difference. You can like see it from up here. It looks awesome. Look at that. But you, you can only build as far as the range of your workbench. So that's why I have these kind of in a loop on that line, cuz I have a workbench in here, which makes a loop here. And then I have a workbench, um, over here by the door. I don't feel restored anymore. Well, I will. Let's go inside. Can't even jump up the stairs there. Yeah, he's feeling really sluggish now. Like he's moving slow. So if we sit by the fire. Do I have anything I can cook still? Yes, okay. Well, sit and have a little cook. How are you, everyone? Thanks for coming in. I'm the Britbeard. I'm all over the internet as the Britbeard. You can find me on Twitch. You can find me on Twitter. You can find me all over the place. So just type in Google "The Britbeard" and you'll find some other guy as well. At least it's not a girl, you know? "Hey, Happyface, you are my first follower on DLive as well." So you're the first person that set off my alarm, my, my alerts, and my first follower. So thank you. I appreciate it. What have we got? What can we make? We can repair shit. Let's do that. Okay, there we go. Hole, hole, hole. I need a hole. Let's make a hole. I realized I'm not carrying a hole anymore. There we go. "Hole can be used to flatten and raise and move the land around." "Sometimes I wonder if Happyface is a bot, because he doesn't have conversations." "He just seems to exist in the world." "It would be nice if you said hello, Happyface, and chatted." "You're just an entity spreading joy on the internet." Okay, can I split this? There we go. I'll put three of these back in here. I don't need to carry all this food. And I'm gonna split these too. I don't need to carry all the shrooms. Alright. I think I need to rest a bit more, right? Let's sit. "The train arriving at platform one will be the Valheim train to the raft." Yeah, we have a raft. Let's go see the raft. I think I need to sleep first, though. "No dreams tonight." Nope. Just blackness. Sometimes you get a dream, it pops up, but you have to read it so fast. It's almost like you need to print screen it and then come back and, and read it later. I'll look at the VOD, see what it said. Can I jump over the fence? Yes, I can. So if I head down to the water, I have a raft that I can explore with. And I did put a workbench down here too. So there's the workbench. There's the raft, right over there. I sailed it for a bit and then I, I couldn't get it back. But what I wanna do is, is when the wife and I play, I wanna go for a little exploration on the raft. What I might do here is build a pier, so let's see if we can do that. Let's see. I, I think I have wood. What does this do for me? I don't know what I can use it for. Is it just decoration? Anyhow, um, I'm gonna need pillars. And I think to get size, what I probably should do is get that, oh, that and put that on top. Rotate it the way I want it. I can't put it on it though. It's weird. Okay. Let's put a wall down here. And then we'll put another post next to it. And then we'll do a, a floor. And it should, there we go. And then it attaches perfectly on there. Am I out of wood? Or is it just not? Oh, it's cuz I was standing there, dingus. Okay, I kinda need some supports. Okay, I need longer wood, I think. Here I can put another one of these, I think. I don't want it to be on top. I want it to be kinda touching the ground. Maybe I can put another one underneath. Alright, let's, uh, let's go for a longer one. Okay, what I'm gonna do instead is see if I can get these and have them go this way. What was that? Why, why did it not? Maybe I was too wet. I don't know. Is it breaking? Is that what's happening? I don't know what's happening. Okay, I can walk out on it and I don't. Okay, weird. Running out of materials though. What is this? Wood floor, one by one? Okay. I think it might be a little damaged. This gets me out. I wonder if I can actually catch fish just by swimming. I don't wanna drown, like run out of stamina and just drown. That'd be terrible. Alright. Let's see. The raft is gone. That's what the noise was. The raft broke. Damn it. Okay, well, let's gather some flint while we're here. The cats have gone absolutely ballistic in the hallway. I think they're playing with a toy and having a good old time. Alright, what time is it anyway? Uh, oh, we got a little more time. We're good. I'm gonna go see if I can grab some more wood. So five. Find some of these trees that the friggin ogre broke down. That little stamina bar is cool. I like how that works. I must say that the devs for the game, I think Iron, Iron something? They, they've really given a lot of thought into how the game works and the mechanics. I watched the people playing it early on, and the tree felling was a little bit janky. But they've seemed to have improved that as well. The wind seems to take the trees down in the angle that the wind's blowing. You know, if you're cutting trees down in a friggin gale, you're, you're in for trouble. And I've found that. You need to be aware of what, uh, what the environment is doing, which I love, you know? Uh, PVE done well is really good. So even just cutting down a tree in the environment, and if it's not working well, you know, you shouldn't be doing things. Okay, the odd little log like this, you can also farm. There's a mushroom down there. And little tiny trees you can get a bit of wood from, not a lot. But if you take them down, they don't grow into big trees. They're gone. So if you wanna deforest an area, you gotta take out all the little trees too. Cuz they'll just grow. But you do get beach seeds, so you can also. Get outta here, you. No sneaking up on me. Give me your resin. Oh, shit. I'm not taking him towards the house. Come over here, you. Come on. Come over here. Come on, we'll take you along the coast. I have no stamina. He's gonna catch me. Whee, run. Don't think I have any arrows on me. Apparently I do. Oh, is he pissing off? Is he coming? Think he's pissing off. Oh, he's pissing off. Piss off. I gotta be really careful now. He's right at our door. Anything I do can drag him out. I could eat another bite. Okay, sure. Hello, doggy. Hello. I have a little doggy that comes in, says hi. I've been giving her little treats, and so she comes in all the time now wanting little treats. Alright, alright. I sneak and my stamina goes down. Oh, I got a neck thing around here. Let's, let's get him to... Where did the deer go? Seagull. I haven't been able to kill the seagull yet, but I do have a bow and arrow, so maybe I could have a go at the seagull. Let's see. If I walk along the coast here, the seagull generally comes to see what's going on. I can hear him. Dog's barking at me. I've already looked at this house. I was thinking, I, I think I put a workbench actually. I was actually gonna fix it. So let's see if we can fix it while we're here. Four. Oh, I don't have much wood though, do I? Enough to fix it, make it look better. Just need to fill in some of these. Oh, that's how they do a window. I'm like, how do you do a window? Of course you use a half-height friggin thing. Alright, well, what do I have? I do have some wood, cuz I was, I was doing some woodworking, so let's put another wall in here. And I think another wall up here, if it lets me. Yeah. Gets a little janky trying to build this stuff. Turn the wall round. Throw it in the hole. Alright, um, need another cross at the front. And then we'll go inside. And I think, oh, okay. Need slanted roof. Starting to rain, so... Oh, no, we gotta go. Alexa, stop. Okay, we gotta go. So time to, uh, I'm gonna put one there too. And I'm gonna put one right there. Just seems like it would support it better. Okay, we need to go. I can't keep going cuz I'll be late for work, and that's no good. So what are we gonna do? We're gonna raid someone. Let's go see. I have, I usually raid someone on Twitch cuz I don't know how to do any of the others. But let's see, who's playing Valheim today? We can pass some of you on. Pass the love on to someone else. This is Mature English, and she has currently 14 viewers. Lady Badger, I believe her name is. So if you're on Twitch, you can come join the raid. So we're gonna do this. So what I, I have to do, cuz it's restream, I have to set the raid in motion, then I have to jump into my own Twitch and, uh, confirm the raid, so... Here we go. You're gonna hear me for a sec. There we go. We got one viewer in the raid. That's probably gonna be me. But we'll jump on over and say hi to Lady Badger. And happy if you have a Twitch account, come on over. And, uh, join the raid. Go, go to my channel and then hop over to Lady Badger, who's playing Valheim. And I'll give her a follow. And, and a host. There we go. I think I shocked her. Go say hi to her. I gotta go. Thanks for coming by, everybody. Really do appreciate all of you. It's always nice to have somebody pop in and just say hi. So thank you, Happyface, for popping in and being the first one to trigger my DLive alerts. I love you, man. Thanks very much. Take care. Ah, there's Happyface on Twitch. Appreciate you coming by. You are a real person, I guess. Anyway, take care.